Good morning. I want to open the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors AM meeting of Thursday, July 7, 2022. Call it to order. A recording device will be used during this meeting.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may be recognized to speak on the agenda?
Yes, Luke, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I requested to be recognized to ask that the Board of Supervisors consider amending your agenda this morning. As you know, Act 65 of 2021, which took effect in August of last year, requires municipalities to post agendas for public meetings on their websites 24 hours in advance. Staff has done so with the agenda before you and projected on the screen. The act provides a mechanism for amending agendas by majority action of the board after first stating the reason for the amendment. This morning, I respectfully asked the board to consider adding as Agenda Item 6E, Planning Commission Recommendation, that the Board of Supervisors oppose a variance application for 31 Harner Court. The reason for this late addition to the agenda is that the recommendation was made after deliberation by the Planning Commission less than 24 hours ago. Further, the zoning hearing in question will occur before the next regular session of the Board of Supervisors. I'd also submit, since an applicant is represented here, we, if possible, move that as far forward in the agenda out of respect for the applicant's time.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the agenda item, Jason? I make a motion that we amend the July 7 AM meeting agenda to include Item 6E, the Planning Commission Recommendation for the Board to oppose variance application of 31 Harner Court.
I'll second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the motion passed. And I will now go back to the regular revised agenda.
Yeah, if I recommend, perhaps we move the subject up between, before 5A. So after, after the authorization to pay bills and the approval of minutes, so the first item of business?
Right, that's what I was going to do.
Okay.
All right. All right, item number one, any public comment for Agenda Items, Rules of Conduct for Public, of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time, the timeout allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the direction of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment? All right, item number two, minutes of previous meeting we have before us, the Board of Supervisors' minutes of June 16, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept said minutes?
I'll second.
All right, I'll make the motion and Jason second it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, authorization to pay bills and approve payroll. I have reviewed the bills and they look okay to me, so I'll make a motion to approve the bills and the payroll before us.
I'll second.
You'll second it? Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, reports, there are no reports, I believe, today. Okay, so you want to move Item 6, 6E now?
Yeah, this is, Mr. Smith, if you don't mind approaching. So I would do a brief introduction here. So the township has advertised a notice that a zoning hearing board will take place on July 14 at 7:30 PM. The, the hearing is in regard to a variance application for 31 Harner Court. The applicants are seeking relief from a zoning ordinance, 399-75A, and the zoning table of the approved subdivision plan to permit the construction and use of a concrete pad covered deck and elevated uncovered deck with stairs to project into the side and rear yard within the required 10-foot deck setback. This application was an Agenda Item at the Planning Commission last evening. At that meeting, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that the board designate someone from the Planning Commission to participate in this hearing with the, with the intent to oppose the application. If I could just kind of circle back to what the municipality's planning code says, the municipality's planning code provides that at the request of a governing body, a planning commission may present testimony before any board. This would include testimony before a zoning hearing board conducting a public hearing when considering a request for a variance. So the, the action item this morning, at the board's pleasure, is to consider acting on the, the Planning Commission's recommendation and either sending a member of this board or the Planning Commission to, to present testimony in the, in the variance next week.
Right, it's simply a procedural, a procedural issue as to who we appoint to represent the township at the zoning hearing board.
If anyone.
Okay. But you would like to make comments, I assume, before we discuss that?
Good morning, my name is Drew Smith, the 31 Harner Court in the Downforge community here in Downingtown. We're seeking variance on both the rear and side of our property. The issue we're facing is the location of the home situated on the, on the lot. Based on the current setback requirements, 15, I think, is the rear setback requirement would require a maximum deck size of seven by 16. And on the side, the required is 10 feet setback, which would require a maximum deck of six foot nine feet, I'm sorry, six, six foot nine inches by 24, which really doesn't allow functionality for the decks. I don't even believe you can fit a table in the deck comfortably. We looked at all options here where we could place this deck and cover, cover deck. And on the left, if you're looking at the house on the left rear, we would still face the same variance issues. It would be much more visible to the neighbors on our street and from the street, and there's no access from that side of the house. It's a bathroom and a bedroom. At the center of the property, again, it's a variance issue. There's a fireplace exhaust on the second story, which would prohibit the, the deck at that location. It blocks natural light and also is parallel to a larger piece of the retained basin behind our house. We did receive HOA approval. We went through the normal process of receiving that approval through their condo control. We submitted the application on 29 of 22, received approval for that, 223 of 22, based on the Declaration 17.02 of the Declaration, the process for submission. We believe the location of the proposed project is the least invasive to the community and the neighborhood. There's about three acres of open space behind the project and at the rear of the project. It adds about 725 square feet of impervious coverage, impervious surface, which totals 3,550 square feet of the total, the total property. So after considering all options, we believe that this, this location is the least invasive for the community, the retention basin with the open space behind and the side, we're not disturbing that. That's all I have.
You understand, Mr. Smith, that by you going before the zoning hearing board, they're the ones who make the decision, not the Board of Supervisors?
Correct.
And that the Planning Commission is our advisory group, who, under our procedures now to keep things rolling quicker, is they, they, they hear your application first, which was done last night, and they have took, took a vote to not recommend the variance. That's all they did. So all we're here to do is to either ask them to represent the supervisors and our zoning issues, issues in the zoning hearing. You're, you know, it's up to you to make a compelling case to convince the zoning hearing board. I have that all right?
You do.
Okay. So I appreciate your presentation again, again, and just, just as an aside, were you able to find that paragraph 910.2?
I was.
Okay. So before us, the supervisors is, do we want to send a supervisor representative or are we satisfied and happy to send a representative from the Planning Commission?
Or, or nothing.
Or nothing, yes, I forgot we had a third choice. So I recommend we send a member of the Planning Commission.
I recommend that we send no one, I mean, the HOA approves it, you know, I think that the zoning hearing board can make that decision.
Kyle, you have input?
I couldn't hear Jason's comment. He said he recommends no one, the HOA what?
He said, because the, well, the-
HOA approved it, so I just think that let the zoning hearing board make the decision.
And real quick, just what was, what was the variance? Was it an HOA variance or it's got to be a county's variance?
No, it's a setback and side yard variance.
Yeah, if I may, just to clarify, the required rear yard for a deck is 10 feet, and the proposal is to put the deck two feet from the rear lot line. The side yard requirement is 10 feet for the deck, and the applicant wants to put the deck six feet nine inches from the side property line. And as the applicant indicated, there are no neighbors on the side or the rear, it's, both areas are restricted, open space in the development. And, and I, I just would phrase what you're doing slightly differently. The Board of Supervisors, or actually, the township is automatically a party to every zoning hearing. In other words, they can participate or not participate. So I would phrase the issue before this board is whether, whether you want to oppose the application or not, and if you want to oppose it, who would you send to the zoning hearing? And I think I heard Carl say he wants to oppose it, Jason say he does not want to oppose it. So you're it, Kyle.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the Planning Commission member going, and again, I want to be perfectly clear to the applicant that the, that the Planning Commission has no more say in this once it leaves, you know, there, goes to the zoning hearing anyway. So I don't have a problem. It's, it would just simply be a witness. Quite honestly, any Planning Commission member who wanted to go to that zoning hearing case could be there anyway, so, and if they were recognized to speak, they could. But I don't have a problem.
You don't have a problem in opposing it?
I don't have a problem having a, a Planning Commission member attend.
So I'll make a motion that a designated member of the Planning Commission attend to represent the opposition to the variance. Need a second on that?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Then we have a nay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the Planning Commission is authorized to represent the township in opposing the All right, back to the agenda, we have under old business, seven mer, Maria Court, drainage issues?
So the township staff is in receipt of a request to appear on this agenda to speak on a concern about a neighboring property's stormwater permit as constructed. I do not see that resident present. Staff has nothing further to add on the matter.
All right, item 5B, budget committee applications. I believe in our packets, we have applications from three residents. We, the committee has been authorized to have as many as five, so we're still leaving the application process open. You've advertised that, I understand, through the email blast and through a text blast. Is that correct?
Correct. At the last meeting, the board directed staff to market the vacancies on the budget committee. Staff has done so through social media and the township's website. Pleased to report that we've received applications from three parties. I think the decision before the board is to either wait for more applicants or stick with three, appoint three, appoint them as they come in, any, any variety of approach to choosing membership in the budget committee at your discretion.
All right. Would it be appropriate at this time to appoint these three, Luke?
So the budget committee is an ad hoc committee. It is not described anywhere in the township's code. This would be a group that would advise the Board of Supervisors on the preparation of the budget for the fiscal year 2023. Their meetings will be public, but there are no other guidelines about membership in the committee. There's no rules written. You may, at your discretion, appoint a body to advise you.
Okay, the three applicants, I would suggest we appoint the three today so we can, they're all highly, highly qualified, in my opinion. We have a new person who has applied, who I believe has never been on the committee before, a Ben Dilks, lives at 570 Corner Catch Road. And he has a financial background and a budgeting background. Whether we have his complete resume here, I thought he was a CPA and a certified management. And then we have Jeffrey Roth, who's served on, I believe, four other prior committees. And he lives at 311 South Caldwell Circle. And we have another new applicant, but not a new person to township volunteer work, Alan Yefko of One Summer Hill Drive. Alan is the current chair of the Open Space Committee. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint those three to the ad hoc budget committee. Any, any second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, I call a question. All those in favor of appointing the, the three, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'm looking here, did we skip over the minutes approval? I think we did. Okay, so I'm going to circle back to, to item two. We have in front of us the Board of Supervisor minutes for June 16 of 2022. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 16, 2022 PM session.
Thank you, Jason. And I heard you second it, Kyle?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're on to item six, new business, permission to send draft comprehensive plan for 247 review. Mr. Ravan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The Planning Commission acts as an advisor to the governing body. Its principal role includes preparing a comprehensive plan for the long-term growth, development, and well-being of the municipality. Over the last little over a year, the, the Planning Commission and its related body, the Ordinance Task Force, have been working on a draft comprehensive plan for the board to consider adopting. Part of the process of, of developing a comprehensive plan per the municipality's planning code is that there is a presentation to the planning body prior to consideration by the board. That meeting occurred last night. We heard a presentation from Ordinance Task Force Chairman Michael Wagner and lead consultant from Thomas Committee Associates, Jennifer Reitz. And the Planning Commission, at the conclusion of that presentation, made a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that the draft comprehensive plan be distributed to the Chester County Planning Commission for Act 247 Review. Other aspects of the public comment period would include distribution to the Downingtown Area School District and to all adjoining municipalities. The complete draft is not in your packet this morning, but as I've mentioned previously, the draft can be found at ebrandywine.org/compplan.
So I'll make a motion to send the draft comprehensive plan for 247 review to the, to the appropriate agencies, as Luke outlined.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item B, purchase of amended soils for Bonsville Mill Garden Project through a CoStarz contract. Mr. Piscala.
Good morning. The garden project at the Bonsville Mill proceeds. We're on the schedule that we set earlier this year. The bridge repair was key to maintaining that schedule, so I thank Matt Van Lou and his crew for, for getting that bridge repaired done. We have selected Laurel Valley soils to supply the amended soils. They provided samples of the soil and responded to the bid last year, and the project was delayed, so we're, we're moving that to this year. The, the cost for the soils would be $50.50 per yard delivered to the, to the park. That would be for 2,000 yards of soil at a total cost of $101,100. This would be done under CoStarz. A CoStarz contract, for the record, is 029-E22-083-1. The $50.50 price that they quoted us for this is actually less than what they have in their CoStarz contract. This cost is also conservatively high, considering the volatile diesel fuel price market. There's a conservatively high estimate for that fuel cost for the deliveries in there, and the truckload volume is conservatively low. The weight that the truck can drive on the roads is limited, and depending on the moisture content of the soil, it, it could be more or less. 20 yards per truckload is on the low side, and it could go up to 23 yards or more if the soil is particularly dry. So that estimate is low also. And we will get a back-end discount reflecting the actual fuel cost at the time of the deliveries and on the number of actual loads that are delivered to, to the site. So the maximum estimate for the, well, the maximum cost for the soils would be $101,100, but we can expect a discount at the back end of the project. The cost of the soils is covered by county and state grants for the garden project at the park. So I'm here this morning to formally ask for your approval of this vendor for the supply of the amended soils for the project.
Where's the soil going to be placed and what's it used for?
Well, the, the garden project, as you know, is about a one-acre garden in front of the mill buildings-
Okay, that's-
-that we've been working on over the past couple of years. The amended soils were engineered, the specifications were developed by the horticultural group that is actually designing the garden. So the likes of David Kulp, who, who is the lead expert for the garden design, and Kai Peterson, who is also an expert in the soils and gardening, were the leads in, in helping to put that together, along with Panoni.
And you say it's covered by grants?
It's covered by state and county grants, yes.
And if I may, just add to the procurement process, last year, per best practices, the, the committee did solicit multiple CoStarz vendors to bid on the project. So we have reviewed the products of more than one CoStarz vendor.
Very true. And the, the sample provided by this vendor was far and above quality-wise, and Kai Peterson was in direct, directly participated in the evaluation of the soil samples, so he's very happy with it.
Jason, you have any questions? Kyle, you have any questions?
I do not.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of amended soils for the Bonsville Mill Garden Project under CoStarz contract 029-E22-083.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, item 6C is parking, speed limits, and stop sign. Draft ordinances update, that's Mr. Van Lou.
Last week, I provided a, an email to the board, mainly quite a few questions I have reference to some of the intersections and stop, or not stop, I'm sorry, parking updates to the developments. So if I can, I'd like to go through each intersection and, and, and get the board's input for each particular intersection or, or road area. And then in order to make these stop signs, speed limit signs, no parking signs enforceable by the police department, it used to be we had to pass an ordinance, but now it's to chapter 245.
It, it, it's still an ordinance, but the, what is being amended is not the previous ordinance. What's being amended is the consolidated township code.
Okay.
So.
Which honestly, I was a little bit confused about that, but Luke did, he and I did talk about it. So the first intersection I'd like to talk about is in the, in the Downforge Development and its Arter's Way, Dawson Place, and Seven Springs Lane, which is in the Hillendale or Downforge Development. It's currently posted as an always stop. And during a board meeting, the HOA president asked the board to place additional stop signs on Seven Springs and Nichols Mill Road. The HOA also stated that drivers do not stop at the intersection of Arter's Way and Seven Springs. And I've been out there, I've looked at the intersection, there's adequate site distance, the amount of traffic that travels through that intersection does not warrant an always stop. So it's my recommendation to not have an always stop at, at that location. The other, the other thing is that additional stop signs generally cause vehicles, people to, to speed between stop signs, it's a perceived that they need to make up the time- to speed between stop signs, it's a perceived that they need to make up the time that they lost stopping. So that would be the first intersection that I'd like to talk about. I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to look at that intersection or...
I'm sorry to interrupt again, if I could just do just kind of a point of order here. So the, you know, we have, in order to be enforceable, we have a list of controlled traffic intersections and a list of speed limits. That's necessary to adopt by ordinance. We have, in many of these instances, we're talking about roads that did not previously exist, and so we need to, for the first time, make decisions about including them as controlled intersections. The action item for the board this morning would be coming up with a list of the decision points here to provide to the solicitor to develop such an ordinance for you to consider at a later date. So just if I could lay the groundwork on a deliverable for today's conversation. Tom, did I summarize that even remotely closely?
That's correct.
All right. So with that said, we're talking about Arter's and Seven Springs?
Yes.
What does the approved plan show?
The approved plan does show an always-stop there.
And even though you, and there may not be a volume, especially on Arter's Way, but isn't that the safer thing to do?
An always-stop?
Yeah. I mean, I've been through that neighborhood a few times, and as they wrap up the construction and all that, and say the project becomes mature, I think you are going to have a lot of speeding problems.
Yes, but again, stop signs are not used to, should not be used to control speed.
I understand that, and that's an excellent point, but it still forces them to, it forces them to stop. If you don't have an always-stop sign, where would you put stop signs? Simply at Arter's and Dawson?
Correct. The side streets would have the stop signs, and then the through street would be Seven Springs Lane.
And then you could always make it a four-way later conditions?
You can. I mean, this is, this is my recommendation to the, to the board, but...
But the HOA has recommended to make it an all-four-way?
The HOA wanted stop signs at every cross-street and every T-intersection coming off of the Spine Road, which would be Nichols Mill and the Seven Springs.
If I could just add one thing, if memory serves, the purpose of Seven Springs Road was to create a through road between Township Line and Creek Road. So I understand the homeowner's desire to slow down traffic, but that putting stop signs there would be contrary to that policy. And as Matt mentioned, they're probably not warranted.
Bruce?
Carl?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was, I was deep in thought. Yes, so Luke can...
Yeah, well, let me say primarily for Lisa's benefit.
Lisa's, right.
We will be taking minutes based on the recording.
Within that particular development, I drive through there a lot and use it as a through road, and there is a lot of children playing on the roads in the through road. I think the four-way stops would be best for that particular development because of the amount of activities. It's very similar to Mapleview is going to be, a lot of kids, a lot of activities going on, and I would be concerned not to have four-way stops. Just a personal preference of driving through already, watching the people play.
You would prefer not that four-way?
I would like to have four-way stops. This might, this, from watching what happens there.
Thank you. No, I mean, I certainly respect everybody's opinion, but I'm just thinking of putting myself, and my first house was in New England Township in Marchwood, and if you drive through Marchwood, they have a lot of four-way stops, and they actually, they would actually put stop signs on Seven Springs and not at Arter's or Dawson. They do a lot of that there in Marchwood, and it does control speed because the stop signs are in unusual places. And it goes back to, you know, the kids were playing in the, in the streets, and it's primarily on Concord Avenue, which is the through way between Route 100 and Route 113, so you avoid the intersection. I, you know, I'm not a traffic person, so I have no idea what the answer is. I just always thought the more the merrier with stop signs when you have a heavily densely populated development.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely. I was wondering if you're still with us.
Yeah, I'm still here. My observations are this. We, we've discussed before that we have the second fastest-growing or the first fastest-growing community in the county. We're putting in high-density housing developments. Bruce makes a very good point about the number of children playing in these developments. Maple, we don't even own Mapleview yet or maintain Mapleview. I've already met with the HOA about speeding since they removed the tractor from North Guthrie'sville coming into that end of the development. I'm already dealing with speeding complaints. I've had a talk with Matt about it, and I understand that there's elevated crosswalks in that plan which might help. One, okay. I understand the PennDOT doesn't want us to use stop signs and speed bumps and whatnot for traffic control, mainly speed. But at the end of the day, we have the problem. At the end of the day, this township has a number of communities. I was on the phone with a resident yesterday about Helm Way, who I know has emailed the township wanting speed bumps. We've dealt with Brookhaven. We've dealt with Apple Cross, but that's a private community. I am very concerned about changing situations that we already have in place that I feel are going to create more of a problem if we change it. We have not had a speeding complaint on Seven Springs since we ran the speed trailer in that development. We ran some speed studies to show that the speeds weren't as high as they thought they were, and we haven't had an issue with the four-way stops. I understand their argument that people might be, you know, running the signs, but that's our job, the thing to go out and enforce it when we get the complaints. If you remove the signs on Seven Springs, we're going to be getting more speeding complaints. Those residents are going to be in our meetings, and they're going to be complaining about it, and it's something the board has to deal with. And we may have that, I mean, I'm looking at down the list here, I agree with some of these, but as far as our high-density, new developments with more kids moving in, more families, I think something as simple as a four-way stop helps correct a lot of the problem that we're having with complaints. So I agree with, as far as Seven Springs Lane goes, I agree with Bruce that we should leave them in there for a little bit longer and see what happens, but we haven't had a problem in here yet.
Thank you. Well, that's kind of the way I'm leaning, leaning that I wouldn't, I'd keep the four-way stop sign until something shows us that we shouldn't have it there. I mean, your point is a valid point, but right now, it's there, and if the chief says it's working and we haven't had any speed complaints, then I wouldn't mess with it right now. But I'm not a traffic person in any way, so...
On a roundabout way, I am a traffic person.
I know. I, you know, that's why I'm confused, that's why it's a...
I just look at the warrants, I look at the, but that's why I brought it before the board for your decisions. I'm fine either way, and I understand.
Jason, you have any thoughts?
I would just, I'm going, I don't know anything about traffic, I'll go with what Matt recommends. We can always add them later.
My only concern is, what is the solution? If we don't use stop signs, we don't use speed bumps, what is the solution to the problem then? You know, I mentioned to you, I mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, no, I'm not trying to, I mentioned that, that what I think moving forward, Bruce, is when we get a design in such as Mapleview, that I think we all meet as a group and look at the plan in regards to some type of traffic calming solutions to long stretches through a development without any kind of controls. Matt said we could do curve roadways, we can maybe do bumped-out crosswalk areas, things like that. There's other traffic calming devices in PennDOT's book. The problem is the township's never really addressed it. So now with all the development in the township and the war, these cluster communities coming in, that maybe it's something we should consider with these developers in the designs right from step one. So for example, the Race Crosswalk, you know, if they had those different spots along the way instead of one, that might naturally just slow everything down.
But we tried, and the developer didn't want to put them in.
Yeah, okay.
So we got one out of three we wanted.
And I think that's where we have to get tougher then. Again, I'm supporting this. I think we have to get a little bit tougher with them because I can print out all the complaints, it's like there's stacks of complaints from these homeowners, groups, and residents and whatnot.
All right, so I think the consensus is we leave it alone for the time being.
Actually, I, with respect, I've heard, I heard from you, keep it as four-way, and I heard from Jason, go with the Roadmaster's recommendation. That's a one-to-one. Kyle, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm going to have to go with Chief on this one, and first of all, for, just for liability reasons, if it's already approved on the plans and we're taking it off, God forbid something happens, it's going to come right back to the township that they, you know, stuck in there and removed these at the last minute, and then, God forbid, again, there's an accident or an issue, it's going to come back on us. So I agree with Carl, agree with Chief, for the time being, leave them in there, they're already approved.
Okay. Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Vice Chairman. Now I hear consensus to leave it as four-way.
Right. Okay. Then I will instruct the developer, since it's not a township-owned road yet, to put the supplementary sign of always-stop right below the stop sign because they are not on there currently. Second intersection's a little bit further down the road, and that is the intersection of Seven Springs Lane and Nichols Mill Road. So within that development, you would be traveling down Seven Springs, if you're, if you're going through, through the development, as Bruce had mentioned earlier. So you go down to Seven Springs, and then you make a right on Nichols Mill, and that continues down to 282. So at that intersection, on the plan, it should, does not show it as an always-intersection, an always-stop intersection. It is currently posted as an always-stop intersection. And this one, I'm going to, I'm going to change a little bit. I believe that it should be an all-way intersection. And the reason is, it's the through traffic, there's a number of units that come through that intersection. There's Nichols Mill, there's a couple other roads down in there, and with the number of vehicles making a left or a right in that intersection, I believe that should be an all-way intersection, always-stop intersection.
Does that still remain your recommendation of keeping the, even though you recommended eliminating two at the top, still keep the four, having two in a row?
I believe it should be an all-way intersection. That is my recommendation.
I've, I've driven that, I think it should remain the same too, just for the same reasons. Kyle, your thoughts?
So on the plan right now, it is, it is a two-way or a four-way now?
It's a two-way stop on the plan, from what I could tell after reviewing.
But it's a four-way in reality right now.
Correct.
Yeah, I'd have to defer to the police on this and Matt. I don't have a problem if it's, if it's a four-way stop, there's nothing that bothers me about that at all. I mean, again, you know, I would leave it up to Matt and Chief on this one.
All right, well, Jason and I thought it should be a four-way, so, so are you with Jason and myself, or are you going to vote two-way?
Yeah, I'm okay with four-way, yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you. And then the remainder of the development is, I'm going to say fairly simple with a number of T-intersections with one of the roads as a through road and the other leg as a, as a stop. Let's see, so I'm going to switch over to speed limits within the Hillendale Development. It should be posted, I believe it should be posted at 25 mile an hour, which is a recommendation per Title 75, subsection 3362, which is in the vehicle code. So the township does not have to do a speed study on particular roads that are considered a residential district, and this is considered a residential district due to the number of homes that are located along, but Seven Springs and Nichols Mill, I'm sorry.
I would agree with 25 miles an hour. I would think it'd be difficult to go faster than that with all the homes on top of each other. You've got to keep your eyes right, left, and center to make sure nobody's darting out in front of you.
Yeah, and the chief was mentioning about, you know, how to, how to slow speed down, and that's one of the things, is to have the side streets and also houses located along the roadway. Okay.
Jason?
I'm okay with 25.
Kyle? Your thoughts on 25 miles an hour?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The chief had mentioned the Mapleview development earlier, and it's also mainly T-intersections. There's the Mapleview main, main road that goes through there, it has a T-intersection with North Guthrie'sville Road, that's going to be, that has to be a stop intersection. The other end of Glory Maple is controlled by the traffic signal located on 322, and then you have the side streets, which would be stop intersections. And then I believe that this development should also be posted at 25 mile an hour, and for the same reasons, it's considered a residential district.
If you have speed on in the middle of it...
Is that where it's located, Bruce? In the center there?
Right, right there.
And this development was designed with a little bit of traffic calming because the road isn't just a straight road. It comes in, it turns right before the townhouses, and then turns again two more times before it gets to, to North Guthrie'sville Road. So there are some built-in traffic calming devices.
I don't want to sound crazy, but the areas that, between the houses, the alleyways, if you want, the private roads, the roads that may or may not have parallel parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and where, every time I go into that development, that's where all the kids are playing, the dogs are being walked. Is there any, are you allowed to post that maybe at 15 miles an hour?
The minimum you can post is 25 mile an hour, but that's a private development. I mean, if they want to put 15 speed limit signs...
15, okay, okay, so that, they would, okay.
Right, yeah, I think it's...
I mean, quite frankly, I don't think I could even drive 25 miles an hour on those roads. It's...
I think it could put 15 more in groups.
Correct.
Right now they could, but what we take
Yeah, private, in a private development, that's exactly what Applecross did. They did 15 miles an hour on the main Applecross Boulevard. So it's very common in a private development, but not, you know, obviously for us.
All right, great. Yeah, it, it's worth noting, both developments we've talked about contemplate some roads being dedicated and other roads remaining private. And, and what we have talked about in terms of our ordinance here has to do with those elements that are anticipated for dedication.
Right, I under, no, I understand that.
Bruce?
And just as a, well, Chief probably can attest to this, I believe anyway, that if it's marked 15, it's under what's, what's required, required. And at that point, we can't even enforce it anyway, so what's the, what's the point? We can enforce it if it was a, a dedicated road and it was set speed limit that was approved by us and the state, I believe, right, Chief?
Correct. Correct. It has to be 25 if we maintain the rules. Bruce, question for you. The, the, in lieu of the raised crosswalks, were they also against painted ones?
No, there are painted crosswalks coming out of those on the plan already.
So they'll, in addition to the raised one, they'll have painted ones?
Two or three crosswalks going across the main spine here.
Okay, 'cause we could, we could have them get those green, those break-green yield to pedestrian signs to put in the middle of the road. They're sometimes effective with people coming up on, they have to look because the law requires them to stop. So that could be effective in, in this section here too.
Yeah, all those
Homeowners only could do that.
All of those crosswalks should be properly posted.
Posted, okay. All right, we look for a written error then.
The, the number six item is, I'd like to talk to the board about posting roads as no parking. So within the Hideaway Farms development, which the, the board accepted some of the, the remainder of the roads in there earlier this year, there are walking paths which are located essentially on the roadbed. So the roadways are, I believe, 26 feet wide with a painted six-foot walkway along the edge of the roadways. Currently in a couple of locations, there's vehicles parking either over top of those walking paths or even on the opposite side of the road. It's my recommendation that where there are walking paths located, excuse me, located on the, the roadway itself, that it should be posted, no parking, on, on both sides of the road. And the reason why I say on both sides of the road, that roadway is wide enough that if somebody is parked, I'm gonna say opposite the, the walkway, two vehicles can still pass side by side. Luke's bringing up the, that particular roadway there. So you can see the, the walkway and that if somebody is parked on the left side of the road there, they would still have a, still be able to pass two cars by encroaching into that, that walking area. So these roads that I'm mentioning are, in the Hideaway Development, would be Emma Court, which would be from Willow Oak Way to Rebecca Drive, and then Rebecca Drive from Emma Court to Randolph Drive, Patriot Lane in its entirety, and Maria Court in its entirety. So like I said, all these roads have a paved surface, six feet, I mean, 26 feet, with six feet is line for either a walking or bike path. So that would be, that would fall under our parking ordinance to recommend no parking on those particular roads.
Matt, I would agree. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I do not understand why there weren't walking paths located off of the road surface and then, I don't know where this design came from. I know this development was designed many years ago. But this is very unique and you don't, you don't see it in the development.
We don't, I don't remember remaining lines at all ever seen in one of them, so I think it's something new.
It's, it's shown on the plans though. Yeah, so everything that the developer did is per plan. That's why that particular road there is 26 feet wide, whereas the remainder of the roads within the development that don't have a walking path on them are 20 feet wide.
Shall, shall we wait for Vice Chairman Croft to return for?
Here's a weird question. We're gonna post it, we're gonna enforce it. Are the residents gonna be able to submit a request to park in the no parking area if they have a party or something like we do with non-development?
Myself, I'm against any request for parking where it's posted no parking. I know we currently do that for Hawthorne Drive. I voiced my opinion about that previously. Why is it posted no parking? And then we give special permission to park on there.
Yeah.
But and if you want me
Fine with this, I agree with this.
And then if you want me to move on, this is sort of in the same, the same realm as the Hideaway Development. So within the, the Cross Keys Development, there's a proposal to do something similar to this. So in order to continue the walking path from the community park to the Mapleview Development, there's a proposal to put white lines similar to the Hideaway Development on a short section of Wildbrier Drive and then Firethorn Drive from Wildbrier to North Guthrie'sville Road. And there'll be a crosswalk on North Guthrie'sville Road to interconnect to the Mapleview Development. Again, I'm recommending that no parking be permitted on Wildbrier from Firethorn to the community park. And then also on Firethorn Drive. There is a subject who lives at the corner of Wildbrier and Firethorn, who does park a couple of vehicles there. So this will affect him, him, or that, that resident. And then also, from what I understand, sometimes when there's sporting events, people will park in that, that leg there. It's just a, it's almost like a short dead end essentially.
I, I would also mention that as part of the East-West Trail Plan is contemplated that, that this would be part of the connection between the off-road trails in Applecross and Mapleview and the off-road trails in the community park. The, the, the connection would be served by a share of the road model, basically a painted white line indicating that a portion of the roadway was for pedestrian use. And the Roadmaster is recommending that in advance of painting that line, we also designate those areas as no parking.
Luke, what are, what is the plan for North Guthrie'sville then to get from?
So Mapleview is building a sidewalk, a parallel to North Guthrie'sville.
Okay.
You might even see it on the plan. It's, yeah, you can see it. They've already, this is, they're, they're building that.
Oh, it's, oh yeah, it's paved.
Exactly. So the idea is to get the safe crosswalk to get North Guthrie'sville there. And then that would be a means by which you could travel all the way from the western edge of the township into the community park in a pedestrian-friendly manner.
Good, okay. I'm in agreement with all the recommendations. Kyle?
I just, I just have a question. Yeah, I do have a question. What, what is, is this gonna be on both sides of the road or one side of the road only?
I'm recommending both sides of the road. If there's a vehicle parked on the opposite side from the walking path, the roadway would still be wide enough for two vehicles to pass, which would cause one of the vehicles to veer into the, the walking path.
All right, so you said earlier, I, I was listening to the streets, but you did say Patriot. And I can tell you right now, Patriot's driveways can hold, most of those driveways can only hold two cars in the driveway. What are they gonna do with people having over forgotten stuff?
Okay, so we're back on number six?
Correct.
What was that?
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
I'm not, I'm not real familiar with their, the driveways on Patriot. I believe they have fairly long driveways.
Oh, you know what it is? Patriot, I know why I'm confused. Patriot's in West Brandywine and East Brandywine. It's the West Brandywine side.
Yeah, so there's, Luke had brought up the, the homes on Patriot Lane and most of them have two or three-car garages with large parking areas.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the West Brandywine side that I'm thinking of that. And obviously our signs wouldn't, that's the other thing. Our, our signs aren't gonna carry through different townships, so how's that gonna work if they're gonna, they're gonna park on the West Brandywine side, not ours?
Okay. Currently, Luke is showing where the, the crosswalk is, which is located in East Brandywine Township. So there's a walking path that, it's where the, the old road used to be and it crosses and then West Brandywine does not have any walking paths on their roadways similar to what East Brandywine has, as far as I'm, as far as I know.
I, I just think you're gonna get some kickback from people having parties and stuff. Obviously, if it's not, if we're not enforcing this 24/7, it's probably gonna be acceptable, but I think that you're gonna probably get a lot of kickback.
Quite possibly. There's, when I travel through there, there's not that many vehicles that do park on the roadway on those particular roads. There is one vehicle that parks on, directly over top of the walking path and then up on Emma, I think there's a couple that, if they're having work done at their house, I've, I've noticed they've parked out on the road.
I, I can think of Patriot now, again, up in East Brandywine section. We've done a lot of jobs there. Every contractor that does work, I'm just using Patriot as an example because I know it very well. Every contractor parks in the street when they're working on the people's houses. So again, if, I, I, me personally, I, I don't see a need for it in some of the areas that you're talking about if it's nowhere near the, the walking path. But I don't have a problem designing a place near the walking path. I know, I understand what I think he was trying to say, is you want people to be able to walk on the road.
Yeah, that's the way it's designed for people to, to walk on the edge of the roadway within the, within the walking path.
If, if I may, I understand that the Roadmaster's recommendation is to make both sides of the road in the vicinity of the, the share of the road stripes, no parking. But I would submit that there's a potential for a compromise and just make those areas where the share of the road marks are, that side of the road, not parking. I mean, that, that is not the recommendation before you, but I'd, I'd submit that
No, I know.
Yeah.
I would agree with that one 100% Luke. And I, like I said, anything that's near a walking path, like if you go down, I can't think of the name of this, Hideaway Farms. If you go down the main road, the walking path is clearly outlined on the, on the roadway. I get that one. No one ever parks on that, on, on that side of the road that I've seen. Patriot Lane, it, it kinda does like a circle at the end and there's really no designated mark out to my knowledge. Maybe there is now, I can't remember. But, but I, every single job that I've been to on Patriot Lane, the contractor parks in the street.
So Patriot Lane does currently have the walking path, I believe, along its entire length within East Brandywine Township?
Yeah, I think it might be on the outer loop, not on the inner loop, because that's where I'm seeing all the contractors parking.
It, it, I have the benefit of the visual. I'm not working from memory, Kyle, but I, I would say it, it alternates which side of the road it's on.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I, I think it, it's gonna be a, you're gonna get a lot of pushback if you make it both sides of the road through the entire, entirety of the streets. But if it was just around that particular area and if it was just on the one side, I'd have no problem with it.
So just, just a reminder of the, the deliverable today. This would, we're using this input to, to, to develop an ordinance for the board's consideration at a later date. So Matt, do you have enough feedback to be able to, to, to prepare a document like that?
I do with the, the exception of the, the issue we just discussed.
Right. I don't know. I mean, there's, there's good argument for both, no parking on either side versus parking on one side only. I always have a conundrum with walking paths in roadways
Yeah.
to begin with. I think it's, I think there, there are always potential accidents just waiting to, to happen. Matt made a, a point, even if it's very rare, that if two cars meet and one car is parked on one side, that they have to go over into the walking lane. But I don't know what, I don't know how much these walking lanes are used, so, you know, it, there's a, there's so many what-ifs.
There, I do see a number of pedestrians using
All right.
the walking paths.
So Kyle's thought of one side as, is, is probably the practical answer and Matt's side, and, and Matt's perception of two sides is to protect the township in the utmost.
More, more of a safety aspect.
Right, that's what I meant for safety.
I mean, I understand the convenience for the, the convenience for the individual residents who live there to be able to park on the road, but
Jason, what are your thoughts?
I think, I'm okay with just one side.
Well, there's Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's not really a through road to get, I mean, you can get from there to High Spire Road, but it's not a, it's not a good cut-through road. Not, not like Nichols Mill and Seven Springs is a, a good cut-through road, so. Now, most of, the majority of the traffic within that development live in that development or, or are working in that development.
Well, then based on, on Kyle's input and Jason's input and mine is neutral, that I would work with no parking on one side of the road.
Okay.
You can always change it later if it doesn't work.
Given that we're contemplating building this in the, the other neighborhood, should, should that also be the same guiding principle in Cross Keys?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why it wouldn't be. I mean, that's
I believe the roads in Cross Keys are 30 feet wide, not the 26 feet wide, so you will have a little bit wider.
Okay, more, more practical, okay.
And I think it would be obvious from an enforcement perspective, if you pulled up and there up and there was a white line painted that you're, you're parking right on top of, that there's an expectation that that might be no parking.
Sure, it was reserved for me. People will say the darnedest things. It was there just for me. Okay.
I appreciate everybody's time and, um.
Right, it's a tough issue.
Yeah, it is, it is. It's one that I can't make on my own without a lot of input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, any subdivision or zoning applications?
Uh, I'm sorry, there is a, there was a, a late addition, um, which is 6D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we, uh.
You're right, I looked all over, the 6D, uh, 2022 road paving program, permission to advertise.
Okay. I'm sorry, I shuffled.
What, 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 what roads are you paving in 2022?
Sorry, I shuffled my papers around and, here we go. Okay. Um, yes, we received the bid documents from, uh, Kyle Turner Suderville Engineering for our 2020 bid contract. Uh, this year we're planning to do base repair and overlay on Gloucester Drive.
Yep.
Hurkley Drive, which is a short cul-de-sac. Um, a small portion of Rowley Drive, so Rowley Drive was paved, I'm going to say about eight years ago, and there's a small section that, uh, is breaking up a little bit. In order to preserve the roadway, we'd like to, uh, make a repair on that. And then also Township Road, so I've heard comments that Township Road has been paved from, uh, Hopewell to, um, Seven Springs Road. The contractor, the developer was in charge of that. But we still have the short section between, uh, Seven Springs and the Mount 90 Trailer Park. So that is also included in, in this. And that road is in such, um, bad condition that it's mainly a, a rebuild. It'll be removing the, removing the asphalt surface, putting down a new four, four and a half inches of, uh, base coat and then, uh, an overlay. So I'm, uh, asking permission to, um, advertise the bid specifications for our 2022 road program.
I just have a question of knowledge. I've, I've been contacted by a, a few people, just curious, there's a portion up in Tunbridge of Helmway between Rock Raymond and Blakely that's disintegrating. I'm sure you've, where that, is that scheduled sometime in the future to?
I would have to look at, uh, the six-year plan that I outlined.
Right, well, you have, you have some, you have Sussex in 2025 and you have parts of, of Blakely in 2024, I believe. But I don't remember seeing anything on the Helmway. And there's a, probably a 400-yard stretch that is, uh, through the wear, wear, wearing course and into the.
Yeah, that base is failing through there.
Yeah.
So I would, I would have to.
It's a heavily shaded area and a lot of freezing and frost.
Yeah.
Okay. So you don't know offhand, all right.
I do not, I'm sorry.
Okay. That's a big, big report you had there, so, on the paving schedule. All right. Any questions on the, uh, paving project?
I have none.
I don't either, other than the one I asked. So is there a motion to advertise for bids?
I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Matt's, um, road paving program to go ahead and advertise.
All right, I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Subdivision, uh, number seven subdivisions and zoning applications. My only question is, I thought we were to review the Maple View plan. What, what is the revised compromise? What, where does that stand? Do we know?
I, I am not aware of, um, well, first of all, for the record, let's rehash, at the last meeting of the Board of Supervisors, um, the developer at Maple View made a presentation regarding amending their approved plan prior to recording phase three of their plan. Uh, at that meeting, also present were representatives of the Homeowners Association and, uh, new homeowners in the, um, in the community. At that meeting, there was a, I'll speak only for myself, a somewhat unexpected compromise uh, that was, uh, arrived between the, the, the new homeowners and the developer in terms of their proposal for the board to amend the plan. The direction given to the developer from the board was to put, um, those, um, proposals into a plan for the board's consideration at a future date, which brings us up to today, why, why, why.
Right.
Why you would, had expected this to be an agenda item. As far as I know, at this time, the, the, the party who I would expect to receive the, the, um, the, the developer's proposal, the township engineer, has not received anything to review. And therefore there is no agenda item today.
Okay. It just seems very strange.
I, I'm, I, I'm in this, I, I also am very curious, but I'm also trying to keep as few cooks in the kitchen as possible.
Right.
Uh, the, there should be direct communication between, uh, the engineer and the developer.
Okay, moving on to number eight, ordinances and resolutions for consideration. Uh, item A is a resolution 10 of 2022 authorizing the review, public notice and scheduling of a public hearing on the proposed amendment to East Brandywine Township zoning ordinance of 1989.
You have before you Resolution 10 of 2022 as described on the agenda item. This is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment which would have the effect of increasing the impervious coverage limitations in the R1, R2, and R3 zoning district, including the R1 cluster and the R2 cluster. This has been in the works for quite some time. So this resolution authorizes a public hearing on the amendment on August 18th and for myself and the township staff to, uh, take care of all the procedural requirements.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So do we need to pass a motion to move this along?
You would actually adopt a resolution today?
Adopt the resolution.
And, and this is not a requirement of the municipality's planning code, but it is a requirement of our, our zoning code.
Okay. So I move that we adopt, uh, Resolution, uh, 10 of 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion? Uh, I think everybody here knows why we're doing it, is to try to recognize.
Minimize.
In, 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 in the modern world today, that, uh, people are, uh, adding more impervious coverage to their lots, lots. And in order to do that with our current zoning, we've had to have an extraordinary amount of zoning hearing variance applications. In checking with other townships and in checking with, uh, both of our storm, both our stormwater engineer and our township engineer, we found that we, we, we had, uh, were kind of an outlier as to the strictness. And that some townships are even moving to no maximum impervious coverage. Yeah. It surprised, it surprised them too, but, but both engineers have clients that, townships that have, that are, that have moved that way. So they, they had no comment, they had no problems with it. So, uh, the purpose here is to try to make it easier for our residents and make it more, cost-efficient for them and, 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 and the township. Again, not, stormwater requirements aren't being changed at all if you disturb more than a thousand square feet, et cetera, et cetera. So. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any public?
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, this is Billy, this is the 90th time I've interrupted. For the purposes of the minutes, um, Carl, what was your vote on the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, very good, thank you.
Any public comment on non-agenda items? Any notices?
I have not.
Or move, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.